All right. Board is back in open session. Welcome, everyone. Welcome Hollywood students.
Yes.
First item of business is we have a public hearing on the 2018 property tax levy. So at this point, is there a motion to open the public hearing on the 2018 property tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, you please call the roll.
Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt. Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Regan.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Marhul.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye. Thanks Martha. So this is an opportunity for the public to comment on the 2018 tax levy. Are there any comments from the public on this? If not, then is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing for the 2018 tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, you please call the roll.
Mr. Regan.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt. Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhul.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye. Thanks Martha. Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comments other than the Hollywood students? If not, then we move. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda by board members? If not, we move right into the superintendent's report.
Wonderful. So I am going to welcome Ms. Hefner, our Hollywood School principal, and she's going to present her Hollywood students to us.
First of all, thank you for inviting us this evening to share a little bit about what we do. We've been working really hard at growing our extracurricular opportunities for students. Last time I was here, I brought the Husky News, and we also had Responsive Classroom here. And so today, this evening, I invited Ms. Nelson and the Volunteer Club. Ms. Nelson comes fresh from her second job as a swimming instructor. And she's brought some of her Volunteer Club members with her to tell you a little bit about what their work's been this year.
Hello. I'm Kelly Nelson. I'm the resource teacher at Hollywood School, and I started Volunteer Club this year, and this is what we do.
Volunteer Club is a club where we volunteer to help others. We have about 30 members in 3rd through 5th grade, and we are always adding new people who want to join.
This year, we volunteered with the PTA at the Hollywood Gift Shop. We helped kids make ornaments, decorate gingerbread cookies, build marshmallow forts, sell snacks at the concession stand, and more. We had 14 Volunteer Club members help at this event.
Every month, we volunteer at the gotcha store. Students get gotchas for being respectful, responsible, and safe. Kids get to turn their gotchas for prizes at the store. We have different jobs like announcing tables, collecting gotchas, and running the treasure chest table.
We helped the PTA make luminary kits to sell to the community for a fundraiser. We made over 130 luminary kits for the PTA to sell.
In the fall, Volunteer Club also cleaned up our school garden. We pulled weeds, trimmed back the sunflowers, and cleaned out the area of trash.
We volunteer in the lunchroom every day by helping keep the noise down, cleaning off tables, helping students open food, and pushing around the trash can to collect the trash.
We also just had a party as a thank you for all volunteering we have done this semester.
I started Volunteer Club because I noticed a lot of kids wanted to help around Hollywood. I had a lot of student council events last year, and more students wanted to join. So I started Volunteer Club, and it gave me the idea for this, and this is all the things that we've done.
I joined Volunteer Club because I wanted to help at school events and clean up our school.
I joined Volunteer Club because I like to help my classmates, teachers, and the community.
The Kids Giving Back website says that volunteering is a great way for kids to dig deep into their own inner resources. The lessons they learn through hands-on experiences are ones that they carry with them throughout life. Kids learn many skills through volunteering. We learn...
Leadership skills.
Compassion.
Respect.
Commitment.
Sharing.
To have a sense of community.
Friendship and...
Responsibility.
We have a lot of plans for our future events, too, and here are some of our future activities.
We are going to clean up after the sock hop.
You're going to continue to help in the lunchroom and at the gotcha store.
We want to collect supplies and make things to help a local animal shelter.
We might be helping, we will be helping at the PJ's Family Reunite.
We are also going to bake cookies and brownies in order to raise money at the talent show concession stand.
We are going to collect toile...
Toiletries.
Toiletries to help RB with their Martin Luther King Day of Service event.
We have a lot of upcoming events for Volunteer Club, and we are always looking for more ways to help our school and our community. Thank you, guys.
So that was great, guys. I mean, first of all, you gave a really, really good presentation. You were all very clear and polished in your speeches. And also, I think it's, all these things you're doing, all these volunteering things sound fantastic. I mean, what was the favorite thing you guys did? And what do you enjoy doing most of all the things you've done so far?
Maybe decorating and eating the gingerbread cookies.
Yeah, so you've got, are you part of the Volunteer Club, too? Are you? No?
Upcoming member.
Yeah, a couple of years.
I heard something, I think, called a gotcha store?
Yeah.
Is that right? What is that?
Um, so, we, so at lunch, we, so we earn these gotchas for being good, and we get to spend them on something fun. So like, we get to get like a pencil or something for like five gotchas, and then you spend a certain amount of tickets for something.
Very good. I think I see some future school board members.
They want to be where you are.
I asked them to do another volunteer assignment this evening. Our Husky News is coming out tomorrow for the first time, the first edition this year. And so I've asked them to distribute a copy.
As you guys were talking, I was thinking, I wonder if they've heard of the RB's Day of Service? And then you guys thought, I was gonna mention that. Thank you so much.
That's fantastic that you guys are helping out with that.
This is wonderful.
If you guys ever have anything else that comes up, we'd love to do anything. So let us know.
And I'd like to share the names of the students that are here to represent the Volunteer Club. This is Diana. She's new this year to Hollywood, and she's joined right in with the Hollywood community. So she's been a wonderful addition. This is Amelia, and we've got Oliver and Gus, and this is James. You guys can put up your hand. And this is Ellie. She's familiar to one of the board members. So thank you all.
Well, no, thank you. That's really wonderful what you guys are doing. That's great. Thanks very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So 30 volunteers, too, from Hollywood School, so that's...
That's wonderful.
That's wonderful. This is another one of our feel-good moments at a board meeting. We also are going to recognize our nationally board-certified teachers. So we have one teacher that recently completed her national board certification, and I realize it was a great opportunity to acknowledge two teachers that had earned it previously. And then we also have a teacher, school psychologist, actually, that had earned her doctorate. So I know we don't have everybody here but Melanie A. Rossi, just recently, not recently, right? It's one of our prior recipients of national board certifications, so. Then we also have Deb Falletti, who's sitting here tonight also. And then Diane Jenka is our school psychologist that recently earned a doctorate degree, and Jennifer Kovar is one of our Hauser teachers that also just recently completed her national board certification. So congratulations to all four of them. These are really accomplishments that are the above and beyond kind of accomplishments that we are really excited and thrilled to have them as part of our staff. The national board certification, for people that don't know, is a really very rigorous process. They take both assessments and gather portfolios and do a lot of videotaping and reflecting on their own teaching, and really, it's a great opportunity. I know it's time-consuming, and thank you for doing it, and congratulations.
So I'm curious what you think the most valuable part of the certification, or the training that you go through to get the certification was. I mean, what did you, if you could condense in a nutshell, what sort of, what you think the main value was to you, either of you, or both of you, maybe? Just curious what...
Sure. So Mel and I did it together the first time, too, I guess 11 years ago. And so the first time is a different process than the second time. So the first time is like a full year, very rigorous. You have to be very reflective upon your teaching, really think about it in a different way. And so when you recertify, which we just did last year, what's interesting about it is they ask you to reflect on the 10 years between, basically, like what have you done to move forward in your profession in those 10 years? So it's reflecting on your teaching and on your growth, which it's kind of nice to be forced to stop and think about what you've done over the last decade in the classroom. And how it's, yeah, I mean, it's sort of like, what have you done, and how has it affected student learning? And to really stop and like reflect on that, I think it's not something we normally have time to do or didn't do necessarily. So having to kind of stop and look at that, I think, is really valuable.
Interesting. Well, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move on. I just had one other item on the superintendent's report. I just wanted to announce that based on the snow day we had back in November, for those of you that recall, we will take our first assigned proposed emergency day, which is June 6th. So I just wanted to share that with the board and with the community, and we will go ahead and get that out on our website and through other communications so that people understand that there is one additional day now added to our calendar. It was on there as the proposed day, but June 6th is that named day. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks Martha. The next item is the consent agenda. So at this point, would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda?
Sure. Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the previous meetings. Those are closed session on October 17th, regular business meeting October 17th, second closed session on October 17th, closed session on November 7th, special meeting and committee of the whole on November 7th, closed session on December 5th, special meeting and committee of the whole on December 5th, and minutes of the closed session, second one, on December 5th. We also have the personnel report, the payables pre-lists from October 31st, November 15th, November 30th, and December 19th, all of this year, and a number of policy updates. So we have the general update memo from IASB, and the following policies. 2:80, board member oath and conduct. 2:120, board member development. Policy 4:15, identity protection, with the rewritten version from the attorney. 4:45, insufficient funds and debt recovery. Policy 4:130, free and reduced price food services. 4:170, safety. 5:30, hiring process and criteria. 5:60, expenses. 5:100, staff development program. 5:220, substitute teachers. 6:20, school year and calendar day. 6:60, curriculum content. 7:100, health eye and dental examinations, immunizations and exclusions. 7:190, student behavior. 7:250, student support services. 7:260, exemption from physical education. 7:270, administering medicines to students. 7:290, suicide and depression awareness and prevention. 7:305, student athlete concussions and head injuries. 4: this is an exhibit, 4:130, free and reduced priced lunch food services, meal change charge notifications. And from the five-year review, the board member code of conduct, and the draft of the checklist for the superintendent employment contract negotiation process.
Ms. Joel, that was quite a list. Are there any items that anyone would like to have taken off of the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Martha, you please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt. Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Mr. Marhul.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Regan.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye. Thanks Martha. Next, we have Riverside Educational Council. Do we have any comments? I don't see anyone tonight, so we move on to the board member comments. Does any board member have anything they'd like to say about any activities or plays or anything they've been to in the last month or so?
I went to the kindergarten and first and second grade holiday program at Central, and it was so adorable. Of course, as you would expect, but you know, what's interesting is Mr. House told everyone that he was demonstrating some different curriculum pieces to the program, so it was really neat to see him put in different percussive elements and the way that he was describing their patterns visually, and the kids would respond. So it was really neat from a parent to see, oh, that's what that means when they're doing that. You know, not being a musician or anything like that. It was lovely, as always. And they're very efficient. They get the next group going. Yeah. It's a lot of people. He does a nice job.
Hollywood did a similar program. Unfortunately, I wasn't there, but I've been told it was...
You heard it was me in town.
It was fantastic. I was unfortunately out of town for work, but I heard it was very nice, and I do have a ritter recording I have to look at tonight, tonight or tomorrow when I get home.
So I went to the Hauser Orchestra and Band Concert, a holiday concert. It was really very nice, as always. They always do a good job on that. Let's read that.
Oh, yeah, I also saw the orchestra. That was lovely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and she's our new teacher, and she's fantastic, Ms. Ferguson.
Yeah, yeah.
Very talented.
Yeah, good. All right. Next, we move on to the committees. So I don't know, Rich, do you have any updates on the finance committee?
Unfortunately for me, my schedule did not permit any time for me to meet with Mr. Fitton since our last meeting, but he has been emailing me many large voluminous reports for me to work through, which I look forward to doing over the coming weeks here and reporting to the rest of you about.
We'll look forward to hearing about those.
Yes.
And then education, Sherry, do you have any?
Yeah, well, it was just kind of a fun time last time because we had the technology department come and talk about digital citizenship. So it was really interesting for us to see what they're doing and kind of how they're protecting not only students and teachers and how they're teaching students. It was neat. Thank you.
And Sherry, and Dan is not here tonight, so we'll have to wait for the update. Okay, so next, we move on to old business. The first item in old business is the tax levy for 2018. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the District 96 2018 tax levy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about the tax levy? We've talked about this on a number of occasions over the last several months. Any questions, additional questions or comments?
No, there were, I believe I'm correct in saying, there were no changes from the last presentation.
No changes from the last presentation?
No changes.
So if there's no discussion, Martha, you'd like to call the roll.
Sure. Ms. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Regan.
Aye.
Mr. Barsati.
Aye.
Mr. Marhul.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Ms. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye. Thanks Martha. Next item under old business is the property tax relief grant discussion that we talked about briefly at the last meeting. I don't know if Mr. Fitton would like to remind us what that was about exactly.
The state board approved $50 million in property tax relief grants for eligible school districts. If the grant amount would be about 40% of what we would be required to give back in local property taxes. It's not a one-for-one. And if we wish to apply, we'd need to do that by January 7th.
So just to be clear, whatever tax money we abated, so we abated $100, we would only recover $40 from the state, so the district would end up effectively losing $60. Is that correct?
Correct.
Assuming it wasn't funded.
Assuming it was funded. That's assuming it was funded. They only kick in 40%.
So does the, Jim, do you have a recommendation for the board as to a next step? Or are you looking for direction from us on it?
I'm looking for direction, but I don't know, I don't think we would want to give up the control of that even small portion of money to the state to rely on it, and we already know it's kind of a losing proposition in the first year.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much what you said last time, where you were, you know, you wouldn't necessarily use your own funds to do that.
I don't see where we would come out of that. There's too many risks to it.
I mean, I don't see why we'd want to do that. It doesn't make much sense.
Given that we're presumably embarking on a major capital project in the near future, maybe not the best time to do that.
Yep, I agree.
And then I believe you also noted that if we apply and win and then choose not to accept it, then that means another district misses out on that money.
That's right. It may take up some money that could have gone to other districts who are applying.
So is there then a consensus to not apply?
I think so. We don't see a lot of benefit in the interest of not, in the interest of making it available or not reducing that amount for other districts that might choose to pursue it, and I don't think we should.
So is there a motion on this item?
So there's no action. Boards do not need to take action on this, but we certainly wanted a direction consensus, so I think we have that.
He mostly just needs to know if he needs to apply.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a consensus then. Okay, thanks, Mr. Fitton. Okay, so we now move on to new business, and the first item of new business is a Village of Riverside proposal regarding security camera relays. So maybe Martha, if you could tell us what the request is and...
Sure. So the Village of Riverside Police Department came to us to make a request to place, it's not a safety camera, security camera, it's actually the relay device. And they actually, they brought us a sample of their device. So I'd like to share it with all of you tonight. They dropped this off for us this morning. It was determined that we are really one of the highest points between sort of high-activity area and back to the police department. So they need essentially, I'll use the term a bounce-off point. I looked to Don Tifano. Don was part of the meeting also, so if you have additional technical expertise to add in, please feel free. But they are looking again for us to be a partner because of the location and height of our buildings in order to have this relay. So I've shared information that the village has provided to us directly, and I know then there were even some follow-up questions, like what if tree limbs were in the way? Who would take care of trimming? What does it really take to get up and install this device? Who would handle kind of the electrical requirements, et cetera? So the village has been very clear that they would use their own capital funds to pay for the device, that they would monitor and maintain whatever would be needed in terms of, you know, making sure that their relay was adequately working.
I support this. It's important to be a good neighbor. I think my only concern is that, you know, I like to preserve the uninterrupted facade of our beautiful building, so I would just want to kind of understand where it's going to go, where, you know, it's not going to be obtrusive or visible, and if it is, you know, how visible. That would be my only concern.
And they did, I'll just add, they did share with historic preservation, because I think there's one also maybe going on like the train station. So this is it, and I believe it does not sit on any additional post or it kind of, so it would be sticking up that you would see this much maybe, you know, like...
From which?
On the front of Hauser, right, or back of Hauser?
Well, yeah, I think you're going to want it to be the stack, the tallest stack, which is on this, this main there.
So visible from the east facade of the structure, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Sorry to interrupt you, David.
No, no. I have questions about this. I mean, not so much just, I mean, we want to be good neighbors, but I want to make sure that we're getting clear and accurate information. I mean, the letter that was sent was basically saying that we're the only spot that can do this, that they do the number of surveys, it's the only spot to do it. And that seems to be, really doesn't seem to be all that accurate. I mean, there's other options out there, I am sure. I mean, at the very least, you could build a pole to stick this on top of. I mean, and also I have questions of like, what, if we do this, I mean, what's going to happen to the, I mean, what if it goes down? What type of access are they going to need? Is it going to be an emergency access? Are they going to come here? What's the disruption to the class? Is there going to be a disruption to the classes? Is it going to be an emergency that they have to come in right away? I think there's just a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, even the data sheet that they provided us, the vendor, or Siklu, or I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right, but says it has interference-free capability, and it guarantees performance even in harsh conditions. Those are the exact quotes in that. But then he's saying that we're, this is the only spot. It seems to contradict what the vendor says they can do and what we're being told. So I guess there's just a lot of questions, because then also, what if we want, what is, how is this going to affect our facilities work? What if we decide to move things? Or what happens if we're doing maintenance and this breaks? Who's responsible for it? It just, there's, the request is fine, I just, there's a lot of questions behind that request that need to be answered, I feel, before we can grant it.
I have more of a general concern. We're in the business of education, and I question our need to be involved in a surveillance type of activity, whether it solves crime or not. I'm not sure they showed relevant need compared to the districts and the villages that they talked about. They didn't give very many examples of others, other than River Forest and the larger Hodgkins. And I just didn't see why we have to be involved in that. Our primary focus is being education, and I just don't support it.
It seems to me like they're just asking for a favor, but I think David's point is...
I know, yeah.
Your points are good. I think David's questions are easier for the police, the village to answer, rather than more global policy issues.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I think part of it is that intersection is kind of notorious for late-night accidents because people don't, that's why there's a lot of railroad ties in front of that property, because people have a habit of running into it, and I think that's why they're picking on that intersection specifically.
Well, they mentioned crime and possibly solving like home crimes. So I don't know. I don't know how I feel about that.
See, and that's the thing. I actually did ask that question, Martha, and Martha and I did ask, I said, what, what sort of is justification? Is there, as Riverside's seen, an increase in crime? And the answer, we didn't get an answer. It was basically saying it's going to help solve crimes.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of things that will help solve crimes, it's just what, so it's just, it's a request, we want to build a good relationship. I know we're going to be talking about the NMU later, but we need to have, these questions need to be answered. I mean, I don't want construction, because I don't want the police showing up in the middle of the day because their antenna went down and they need access to it. I mean... So you're worried about, there's unintended consequences, like you might imagine it goes up and you forget about it, but in fact, all kinds of things could happen. It could break down, we could have people coming to fix it, we could have, you know, further issues, there could be chopping down our trees or whatever, you know, who knows what exactly is going to be happening.
Who knows what exactly is going to be happening? So, yeah. So I think there are more questions, some questions we would need to have verified. Does that sound like fair statement? Rich's question about where it goes? Are we going to see it? Linda, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I...
I guess I just want to... I'm sorry.
No, I was just... I think the device is going to be installed somewhere. I would prefer not a large pole. You know, like, I mean, I...
But maybe...
This is already something decided by the village, so it's not something that we have a matter of if we want it on our property or not, yes or no. I personally don't have a concern with it. Yeah, should we get those questions answered? Absolutely.
Right. But I mean, I guess the thing is, what I'm trying to say is to say that this is first of all going to be no cost to us, because these things could potentially be costly, I mean, if it's disruption to the class. I mean, and I don't know how much power this takes. I mean...
It sounds like it's just an outlet.
Yeah, it's just an outlet.
Well, it's just an outlet, but if you ever unplug your TV, I unplug my LCD TV when I'm going on vacation.
Correct.
My electro telephone drops even. So it's just there's... The fair fact that they're saying that this is the only option, I find that difficult to believe, because there's always other options out there. This can't be the only option. So I'm just asking for more information. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me. That gets you some clarity on these issues. I mean, because there are always unintended consequences, in my experience, things that never sort of play out the way that you imagine it would play out.
Right. And I think we can, you know, propose it in a way where like, you know, work can't be done during these, you know, hours, you know.
My agreement is we could certainly forbid them from coming in to repair during student time.
Yes, yeah. Like, yeah, I think if we make those more, you know, more explicit, so that it is absolutely not interrupting our day.
Right. And they're not changing our landscaping, our trees, and, you know, whatever other concerns we have.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll bring it back, and I will try to get some additional information from the village.
And I personally, I agree with Sherri's general point as well. I do agree with that at some level, that we are an educational institution, and these requests, they seem minor, but then you have taken time and administrative, and it's taken away focus in a way. So even though it's a small thing, they accumulate over time, you know? So, okay. So it sounds like you'll get some more information. Okay, then the next item is the reciprocal reporting agreements with the villages of Riverside and Brookfield. So...
So one of the questions had come up about the more formal documentation of the occurrences when we consult with the police of Riverside and police in Brookfield. So we have these signed reciprocal reporting agreements, and really, they signify a partnership. They... We have board superintendent agreements where if emergency vehicles are on school property or there's a significant discipline situation, et cetera, that you are being informed by that. But one of the questions is a question really for all of you to think about is more formal documentation of the occurrences when we sort of essentially enact this reciprocal reporting agreement, something that would be of interest and of value to the Board of Education. I guess the thing I'll add, I'll just sort of interject immediately, is that a lot of this is informal. This is really about a partnership. So I've been reflecting just on the occurrences and the things that aren't always so quantifiable, but it will be a child whose family did not call them in absent, and we try to reach the family, and we don't get any response. We have sent police into people's homes just to do a well-being check. I mean, we're very serious about, you know, we need to make sure that a child wasn't somehow, you know, between home and school, didn't get to school. So we will take those situations very seriously, and I can think of a few times where we've asked the police to be part of that with us. They have some particular background training, let's say, in social media right now. They have just been a nice resource for us, and sort of helping us understand how children misuse social media, and I know have offered us what I would call informal input on that. We recently had... There was a fight in town. It was really high school kids, but it was near our property. It was well after school hours. But again, we said to the police, we think we'd like you to just, you know, make sure these kids are okay. So again, I'm trying to think about those situations. Those are situations that I share with all of you, but sometimes they're not so clear in terms of the date, the time, what to exactly call the incident. But if this is of value or importance, we can certainly think about ways to formalize that. But I know that's really the request that's for the board to consider.
And I guess, I know I was the one who initially requested, I mean, brought this question up. But I guess, I guess going to sort of to those points, like the wellness checks, social media, I mean, these are all things that I still firmly believe the police should be doing, and we should be doing without this agreement.
Right.
Okay. But it's... And I'm not... I don't have, I don't have per se problem with what we've talked about here, like how we're going out to the police. My... I don't... I've never heard the police ever coming to us. And I'm thinking this is a one-way communication. And, I mean, I was looking at this, I mean, one of the attachments in here is, there was a memo that was given to the District of Riverside, and it said this was a requirement by Illinois law. And this isn't a requirement by Illinois law. I mean, this is... But it's the fact that they said it was a requirement in an official document that went to the Village of Riverside. It just... We need to have two-way communication. We want to build a relationship. It's not one-way, it's two-way. And so I guess I'm just more specifically asking is, when do they come to us with things that are reported to us? Because I have kind of difficulty believing a year has gone by, and there hasn't been one incident in this village that they knew about that they've reported to us.
And that's what's hard, if we don't know something about something.
Right, exactly.
I mean, what tends to happen, and it tends to be more middle school than elementary in terms of any situations that I can even sort of think about, is children at that age tend to share what's happened on the weekend, things that they're worried about, things that they're concerned about. So again, even though I don't know if things haven't been reported, we tend to hear about things from our students. Teachers, you know, they'll talk, they'll confide in the teacher. The teacher will overhear, you know? So I don't know that there are glaring omissions there.
I get... I hear what you're saying, Dave, but I'm trying to imagine the type of information that they should have brought to us to make it a two-way street. And I can't arrive at anything. I just don't understand what you mean by that.
Right, well, I mean, it's spelled out in the agreement, I mean, of what they're supposed to report to us. I just... It just seems... It's discomforting to me. It just seems discomforting that we are the ones who are going out and they're not coming back to us.
Is that... No, is that true? I mean, I don't know with the...
What we're saying is that's hard to say, because I don't... I can't think of...
What I'm not saying is we're not saying whether things are not reported, but are we getting reports, I guess? We can't say that.
All right, I'm not asking.
Right, we're not really getting reports, but I'd like to believe that, because there are significant suspected gang activity, episodes of violence, significant...
Right, right.
Like, the things that are spelled out in the agreement are not things that we're... Are being reported to us, things that are, let's say, occurring in the evenings or weekends, and we don't know about them. I'd like to say that's good news, you know? Again, I don't think they're keeping things from us.
I feel like this would be a very different... Say we go to high school. I'm sure the relationship is a little bit different there, because there might be actual, you know, incidents that are happening. I mean, yeah. I understand what you're saying. I just... I personally like having the partnership and having it formalized, because it's clear that we, you know, the administration anyway, has felt it necessary to reach out to them at times. And, you know, I hope it doesn't happen, but if there is some sort of situation where there's criminal activity, or, you know, it's expected that the school district is informed as well. So, I mean, I don't know.
Kind of furthering what I think you're saying, Linda, I think that, you know, prior to this administration, a relationship didn't exist. And I think the relationship that Martha has worked to nurture with her counterparts in the village has been helpful to this district. So I always look at it as, you know, when you really need it, it shouldn't be the first time that you're talking to these people, right? There should be a rapport that's been established, and a trust level that's been established. But that needs to be monitored constantly, and we need to trust that Martha's passing that information to us when we need to have it, and that if there is some type of breakdown in that relationship between Martha and her counterparts at the village, that'll get communicated to us, and then we'll put a new lens on this agreement, right? It's our job as a board to make sure that our students are protected and safe, and that's the great part of this agreement right now. Is it in perpetuity? Of course not. We need to watch it. We need to continue to watch it.
So we could bring this back as an actual action, or just, you know, the board through conversation? I mean, this is like...
What would the action be? Because the agreements are already in place.
A request, essentially a request for to create more formal documentation of the incidents and occurrences of sort of this plan being enacted.
I...
That's actually what you were asking.
Right. I mean, just because, like I said, I get the sense that it's a one-way communication, and we can assume that, yeah, everything only... Incidents only happen at the school. But I just have a hard time feeling that that's accurate. And so I just want to make sure that this relationship is truly a relationship that's being built on, it's not just us being used to send information out. That's my... Because we are in the business of education, and if it's not sort of a two-way street, you know, I don't... I have a hard time, because we're... Our business is educational, to be. We're supposed to care for those kids, and we're supposed to give them a good education. But if we're giving information out and we're not getting any information back, I just... I find that I have a hard time with that. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, I don't have any issues with what those incidents you've mentioned. I mean, those are completely appropriate. I just want to make sure that we're... That it's, like I said, it truly is a relationship that's being built in both sides. Because I do think you're doing a fine job with that.
I think that's part of why it's hard to document, because it really is about a partnership. So even when we report something, it's not just a formal sort of report out, it's really a contact to say, this is what we have going on, just want to share with you, one, in case there's any, anything additional that might go on in the community, but also they really are a resource around sometimes how to help solve a problem. So that's really the intention. It's not to say, here's our monthly report on sort of what our students have done wrong, you know? So...
Joel or Sherri, did you guys have anything you want to add to this view?
I think I talked about it last time.
Without specific incidences that really went south, as it were, I think what you have right now is working. I mean, as long as there is that, where we are asking them for help, like you said, with social media or a well-being check, I think what... Going back to what Rich said, just continued monitoring of and making sure that it is two-way street. And if there's evidence that we feel like we're just being asked to provide information without anything in return, that's really all we... That's... Yeah.
So is the idea then that we would basically just, you know, as Martha would do anyway, just if there was something that does... Maybe Rich was alluding to earlier, if something does seem like it's not working the way it should, then she should come to us, and we can talk about it and go from there? Is that the... Is that...
Yeah, all right.
And this is to be reviewed every year?
It's an open-ended agreement.
Maybe we could...
We can put a review process, just even put in our own, you know, that we should review. I don't know. We can do it annually.
Just to ask you, is it working or not? Or would it change anything?
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that would hurt. I think that's great.
All right. Maybe during the annual board sort of...
Right.
What do you call that? Okay. All right. Next item is that number three is the request for quotes for an exterior plan. And Martha, would you like to maybe talk a little bit about this proposal?
Sure. It's a request for qualifications, not unlike... It's a professional services agreement. So what we know is there are traffic engineers that the district has worked with in the past, where we've really looked at, I think, how traffic really flowed safely around our schools and helped with pickup and drop-off routines and that kind of thing. What we are looking for as we, you know, kind of move further on down the road in our facilities planning, is to engage with what I would call traffic engineering firms, but just some initial exploration with these firms. I would say they're firms that really look at traffic, but also some version of almost landscape architecture and civil engineering. It would help us with this goal of separation of play and parking, in particular, thinking about the central Hauser campus as a starting point. And as we looked at the possibilities of working with these firms, they do have the potential to cost more than $25,000 for a project, and that's really for the professional services around the project. So really, the best way would be for us to put out a request for qualifications, for us to then hear back from interested firms or charities who would be interested in doing this. And then we could all decide, does the board want to actually interview firms in the same way we did it with architecture firms? Would we want that to happen in committee? But the board either way would sort of make a final approval of a firm or group to do this work. So with your essentially sort of consensus agreement at this point, we could go ahead and get the RFQ out there, because we do think it would take time to get back some of these proposals, and then we would have more detailed information to bring you for future action. Jim, did you want to add any other details to that?
No, we'll lift it and publish and see kind of responses we get.
So it's not going to be a directed RFQ? It's going to be a public publishing? You're not going to be... You're not going to direct it to five or six firms? You're going to put it out public?
We would direct it and publish it.
Got it, okay.
We have two firms already, one who's did a lot of the traffic engineering for the village and for the district, and then another firm that's done some work in the area that we've been in touch with. So we would certainly direct those and then put it out publicly, as Jim said.
I noticed it talks about traffic access and circulation patterns. Would that be coordinated with the existing plans and studies that were already done recently? Because I don't want to pay for something we already have.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And we're really very much looking at kind of our interior, you know, the interior of the school property, so our own parking lots.
Well, it talks about adjacent streets, so I was just curious what we would be paying them for.
And they would come back to us with a more detailed proposal, and we could look at that and say...
We...
And they do know that some of this work has already been done, and not that long ago.
Right, yeah, I don't want to... If we already have a study on that.
Would this be some... They would go before the board and make a presentation, or how would this work?
So we could do it either way. I think that depending on how many firms we hear from... So with our architecture firms, we did sort of an initial screening, and then three firms came forward. So some of it's going to depend on how many proposals we receive, and then as a board to decide if you want to meet each, you know, meet each or meet three. That's also something the facilities advisory committee could look at, just in terms of process steps. But either way, the board makes the final decision on the firm to work with.
I wouldn't mind a presentation, kind of a big stuff.
From the top three, or something like that? You got, that the facilities committee maybe screens the top three?
I would say, I, I've got a couple minor edits that I don't think affect your end goal, but it's, the way it's written right now, it's more traffic engineering, and really what we're looking for is internal planning supplemented with possibly traffic engineering. So it's okay to share that, but in general, I would say let facilities screen those top three, and then the, the selected would give us a presentation. The best, sorry.
Committee to look at top three, or board to look at top three?
Committee to look, committee to look at top three, and then whoever turns out to be the committee's choice would then give a presentation, just what they want to do to do.
So committee recommendation?
Yes.
I might say maybe the top two, I mean, I don't know how many responses we'd get for this, I'm sort of looking at when we got the quote, demolition, we only got like three, so I'm thinking, maybe if we could just have the committee send the two, so we're not...
You're forcing the committee that the two would present to the board, you're thinking? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Because I thought Joel was saying that one would...
Yeah, I was saying just one would, the recommended would present to us. It's, this is, we're, we're not looking to spend too much money on professional services, and we do have some firms identified who've expressed an interest, so they should be able to give us a competent proposal.
I thought we were talking three, so no.
So it depends on how many come forward.
It really does, and that depends on the current market for services.
So just so we understand, or are in agreement, then, the way we're talking about this is the facilities committee would interview these firms, whoever replies, come up with a top choice, and then that top choice would come to the board and give a presentation? Is that what we're talking about?
I would expect that the facilities committee would review the proposals from, all of them, then interview possibly the top three, and then give, give the board the recommendation of who they...
Give, just give them recommendation, or would the board want to see the presentation itself?
We could, I think the, the committee could forward the presentations, that's fine, they're, the presentations aren't going to be that exciting.
I want to hear and ask questions.
Yeah, as I say, I think it's something that could be, you know, yeah.
As a, as a, as a board item?
Yeah. I think that'd be...
I think that would be, I think that would...
Sounds like, sounds like we have an agreement then.
Okay, so the board will see a finalist, essentially.
Sounds like...
Yes.
Of course, we'll keep you updated, or the facilities committee will, along the line, if we think there's two finalists, maybe they would both come up, you know, like, see what happens. I'm excited about that, though. I really think...
Joel, we'd welcome the edits, so thank you.
Sure, thank you. They're, to clarify, the edits are really only, the edits are more on the first two pages, the planned objectives and the outline of work are well done, so thank you, Jim and Martha.
Are there any other thoughts on the, on the RFQ? Then if not, the next item is the Vistara Construction Services fee proposal. This is the proposal from the project manager, Ramesh, that the district had hired in 2012, 2013 to oversee the last big capital project. And so Martha, maybe you could tell us a little bit about this proposal.
Sure. Do you want to share a little bit about it?
This is one of the three companies that we interviewed when we had direction from the board to look for a construction manager. And this, they're three very different companies. This is the one that seemed like the best fit, and got a lot of unsolicited, insolicited referrals and good references about Vistara and Ramesh in particular.
But before we would enter into this contract, wanted to present this as a new business discussion item, and then it would really come back as a old business action item at our next meeting.
I'm curious what you'll think of the phase cost estimates? How do you, is that standard compared to what you...
Which item?
Well, there's, you know, design phase estimates and bid phase.
Actually, this is pretty well done, because what it means is, the way this contract is written, Mr. Mayor would review the plans that the architect is putting together and provide suggestions on how to improve them.
Right.
And by doing that early on in the, in the design process, that's where you can get the most value. The architect hasn't advanced with a set of plans that get reviewed or get thrown out because they just didn't work. So this is, you can get the most effective, the most cost-effective work by getting his input early on, rather than the last minute.
Right. And what about cost, are these reasonable, do you think?
For the duration that he has, because the contract ends, Mr. Pitt, if you're holding out, I think it ends in September 1st of 2020, this is pretty fair.
Okay.
So I guess I would add to that, your comments, Joel, you know, your comments about design phase are right on, definitely, he's almost acting as, not just a project or construction consultant, but also a code consultant, and he has valuable experience because he's worked in this district before, right?
Yeah, I like that, too.
The only thing that I'm perplexed by is the fact that the construction phase is quoted here, when we haven't even determined the scope of the job yet.
I'm not sure how he estimated that.
It's not appropriate. That's a concern. It's not appropriate. I mean, how, how can that be quoted when we don't even know if we have a 12-month project or a 24-month project?
Well, that's why I was asking whether you thought it was reasonable.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
So what would you recommend? Would you recommend to take that out for now until we have a better...
To be determined after the scope?
Before I got to that point, I would say, Ramesh, how did you quote the construction phase of it, when you don't even know what our construction project is yet?
Right.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Where'd you come up with that?
If we have, we don't know if we have a $4 million project or an $8 million project, whatever it is, we have no idea. So we don't know how long it's going to be, so how is that being quoted?
I don't want to answer for him, but...
Right.
Okay.
My concern was the duration of the contract, I mean, are we going to be done? I mean, it seems very reasonable that we could be done at that time, but construction delays and everything, I just want to make sure that the contract with, will be with us to the end.
And we could extend it, or...
With the option to extend, if the dates start to wait.
Exactly.
Right.
So we'll gather some additional information, and this isn't an action item, we ideally bring it back next month for action, though.
There's one other question I have, that's not about this particular contract, but it's about the architectural contract that we have. So far, I think we've been paying the architect time and materials for the work that they've been doing for us. But, and I'm not a, I'm not an expert in this, but my understanding is that frequently when you go to the next phase, then it becomes a percentage of the job, that their fee is a percentage of the, no, that's not the case?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
They'll want that.
They'll want that.
But we will not accept, that is not how professional services are supposed to be contracted in this state going on.
Okay. Because my understanding is that in our, our last architect, we had an agreement that for a large project, their fee would be 8% of the value. I think that the one, the firm we had before that, it was a similar amount, 8%, and I know the high schools got something like that, so it, it does seem to be somewhat standard, but I, I'm not, I mean, if you're saying that's not the...
Defining, sorry.
So I'm just, I just, I don't know, but I just, it is, it is something that's sort of out there, a little kind of nagging, a little bit in the back of my mind, that...
You can get general, a general idea of what the professional fees will be on the basis of, or defined as the percentage of the final project. But the contract that we have with our service provider, professional service provider, should be well-defined, and so far we've had time and materials with a cap, and that effectively gets what we want.
Okay.
We've only got contracts with Carrie for this concept phase for Ames, and then the playground and outdoor space that we did. We have yet to contract with her for the actual design plans.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is what is the, what is the, what is that contract going to look like? And also, how does it, how does it interact with, you know, if we're hiring this, this, if we're going to hire a, a project manager, presumably that project manager will be doing some of the things that the architect might have done had we not hired a project manager. And so does that somehow affect the fee that we pay the architect? So those are questions that I have, I don't know the answer personally, but...
Will still require support from the architect when it goes into construction, because they'll have to answer RFIs or questions regarding their plans, but we would not contract with DLA for other than a very limited amount of site time, for example. Because you don't want those services duplicated.
Oh, and better understanding of what, yes, on that side as well.
Yeah, I mean, none of us have the answers right now, but we need to ask some questions and figure that out.
Absolutely.
Don't have the answers yet.
Right.
Okay.
That's what you're saying, you'd like to see, you'd like to get some information.
I think it's part and parcel of this, this sort of thing.
Yeah, right, right, right. Piece it all together to see what we're, yeah.
Right. Okay.
That would give an idea.
Okay, good. So are there any other questions or comments on that item? Then if not, the last item in new business is the draft of the 2019, 2020 school calendar.
Sure. And these are, you have two drafts in front of you, and again, this is a, just an initial discussion item. So there's a number of factors that go into our calendar planning, and one is we work with Riverside Brookfield High School, they have also presented a draft of their contract, and our goal is always to match winter break and spring break with those, because we know we have families that have children at both. So we wanted to get the drafts out there, because we do actually have families that start to wonder about when is winter break and spring break for the coming school year. So by having these drafts, you'll notice that the winter break and spring break are the same. We have just some, some minor variations. The other thing we've put in there as a draft, just for the board to give some thought to, is using Election Day as an institute day. So that is something that some of you have asked, and actually our Riverside Education Council has also asked us to consider that. So just in the name of school safety, and again, I feel that our, we handle Election Day in a very safe way, and it's not a necessity, but when a number of questions are presented and it becomes a, we typically do a Fall Institute Day, it would make some sense to do it around that time of year. So that is another proposed idea in the draft calendar. Ultimately, the board does approve the, the school calendar, but we will, Merrill's working with, gathering some additional teacher and parent input to, just on what calendar makes most sense. We don't adhere to the same start date as Riverside Brookfield High Schools tend to start earlier. We also know that if we were going to start anticipating construction, we know we're not doing construction summer of 19, but even this idea of, do we want to start earlier to get out earlier for summer of 2020? So these are all things that are kind of starting to go through our, our thought process right now in regard to calendar considerations. So again, just wanted to get it out there so that we can have more discussion next month, we could potentially take action after we've had more input from a calendar committee.
Calendar committee? We've never had a calendar committee.
Yeah, we're having a calendar committee.
Is that, why do we need a calendar committee?
I, I am...
I don't think we need a calendar committee.
Yeah, it'll meet, it'll meet once or, once or twice, it's not a board, it's not a board committee, no.
No, I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying it is. I'm saying, I think we're making it too hard.
I agree.
I think we have what works.
My experience has been gathering some input from teachers around the preferred professional development days. Even our parent-teacher conferences have created a unique question just around the instructional days and how the state is now counting instructional days. So I do think there's value in engaging our teachers and engaging parents. I know our parent leadership team has given input to us on the, on the, on the calendar in the past, so I'm...
Have you had a lot of complaints about the current calendar? Is that where this is coming from, from parents?
No, I don't think it comes from complaints. I guess it comes from just engaging other people in the process, and I don't think it's all just mechanical. I think there are some, some choices to be made around creating the best calendar for student instruction.
I personally don't think we need it. I think it works very well, but it's just my opinion.
Yeah.
One question I have is, is the, is the start date, it's the, in one of the, one of the proposals, I think it's the 22nd, and the other is the 21st.
The Wednesday, the 21st, on the first draft?
I've always wondered about these start dates. I know the high school starts early because they want to get their finals done before winter break, but that's not a concern for us, so, because my question is, why should we start so early? Why not, why not push it back until maybe the next week, the last week of August, or else the first week of September? Because that's typically the best time of the summer is August, right?
I've actually had that same question, is why do we sort of start mid, like...
So early? Because who cares if you're getting out on June 3rd? I mean, who cares, you can't do anything on June 3rd. But August is a great time to, you know, for families to travel.
I think they're trying to just match the high school as much as they can.
Yeah, get, get close to the high school, you know.
But we could do, we could do that, and we could keep everything else the same, but start a week later and finish a week later. So the, the winter break would be the same, the spring break would be the same, everything else would be the same. We don't have finals, so it's, there's no point...
Well, just make one comment about that, and I understand where you're coming from. What the teachers are going to tell you is that's going to shift our trimesters further back a week, and the way conferences are positioned currently, it won't line up necessarily then with when we would report on progress. So if parents were expecting to hear about report cards that would be sent home within that week's time period, they won't be completed with the trimester. That timing will shift and be closer to mid-December by the time we would issue report cards. So that's just something to keep in mind, because there's been a practice or a tradition of talking about what you might anticipate on a report card at parent-teacher conferences, so that may not be able to happen as specifically as it does now. So that's something that I know the teachers will raise as a concern, because even the little bit of shift that we had this year, and issuing them four days after the Thanksgiving holiday, raised some concerns for them around that, so.
And I would also say, this, this, I would also recommend that this 1920 school year calendar would not be a year to think about starting later and getting out later, with the idea being that it might have construction on our...
What does that, what does that help with? Shifting the, just shifting the time shouldn't, shouldn't affect things, we start, if we start...
If you stay starting later, it's...
Because we're going to have to save on time anyway, right?
I understand that, but I appreciate it.
Well, actually...
I know, but this year we didn't...
If we held to this in 2019 to 2020, and then you shifted for the 2020 to 2021, that would give you a longer summer to do the work.
That, that particular year, yeah.
Yes. An extra week or two. An extra week could be helpful, and we're going to be asking for a lot to be done on our...
Well, that's what happened. When the big construction happened, the last time is, we started the school year after Labor Day.
Set that, okay. That, just to give us a little longer.
I know, the school just could have done that. So try to get an earlier one, and then a later year in the next...
If we meet with this group that Martha's proposing we meet with, we can float the idea of a week later start date with that group and just see, because there's a couple of parents that we were going to reach out to, a middle school and an elementary parent to get the perspective, and then there's teachers on the support staff, like, we're trying to get a representative group, I think. I didn't, I didn't get a committee at all, so it's kind of surprising.
People do, people do like to give input to the calendar. I mean, the calendar does matter, it is, it is, how do you build your best calendar for instruction, and things like trimester dates, professional development dates, obviously there's some, there's a lot of givens, you know, there's not, it's not a highly creative process.
No, I just, I'm listening to Griffin Penn in my head tell me, a couple years ago, saying, you count the days and make sure they're, they're legal, you put in your institute days.
Well, I'll share with you, having run a calendar committee in my former district, where we made some very interesting decisions about the holidays we decided to honor, and talking about diversity and equity, it was an interesting process.
I just know that, I just know it's lived here a long time, and it always works very well. So for someone that lives here, it's been very effective.
Oh, good. There's informal conferring, and there's can be formal conferring, but either way, we're looking for it.
I personally wish you had maybe told us you were considering a committee before we, just my preference, but...
I'm just going to add here, I do not support an institute day on Election Day. I think it's an excellent opportunity to have conversation in class, real-time, salient conversation in class about civic duty, about stepping up and doing what you need to do, and not tagging that as an institute day.
I agree with Rich on that point.
I totally, yeah, I totally agree with that, Rich.
As long as we feel that our schools are safe during those times, as they're being used by the community, I agree.
How many schools are currently being used?
Central is not, and right now Ames is not. So three are being used.
I will say, fundamentally, I agree with your stance completely. I think just sort of, given that, you know, a lot of things, the way things have been going on, and we hear all these one-off cases, I would support Institute Day on Election Day. I mean, I agree, I think...
For school safety, is that...
I don't think we need it for safety, it's been very, very...
But is that what Dave...
It is, because I've heard, I mean, I've known people, parents, who will patrol, quote-unquote patrol, the schools, because they're concerned something's going to happen. I don't, I, I, yes, it's safe, it hasn't happened, you know, it's, it's, it goes into the whole thing of safety, the chance of something happening is minuscule, but if it's going to, I just, given the toxicity that has been going on lately in politics and how people behave, I, I would support, I agree that we should have that discussion, that's very important. I just don't think we should be down on Election Day.
School's safety is obviously our priority, and, you know, we need to take the steps to ensure that if, if any of our properties are going to be used as a polling place, we need to make sure that they're safe. That's it. That's our, and that's part of our, our conversations with public safety as well.
We pay for, we pay for people to do that, right? So...
Yeah, but this is publicly funded institution, and I think it's important for us to open Yeah, but this is publicly funded institution and I think it's important for us to open the doors when we need to for public use.
I'm not saying we don't open the doors, I'm just saying...
Yeah, I, I, I'm fully okay with paying someone to patrol or whatever needs to be done if they come in.
So I appreciate the feedback and this is why I want to get it out early because I, you know, there are a number of opinions about, about the calendar. So thank you.
Yeah. I would say Jeff's comment about pushing the school year, the start date down, because our Bs, because our public high schools is so far up, I would hesitate to do that because then you're cutting off an additional week on the front and the back where if you do[1677.01]